Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to our regular session of the Wilmington School Committee, March 12th, 2014. First, we'll start with a roll call vote. All members are present. Linda. We're going to go a little bit out of order so that you don't have to sit through our warrant articles, which are a challenge every week. And so, we're going to start with the Superintendent's Search Committee. And Mrs. Bouchard will take over for a few minutes.
Hi there. I want to say thank you to our folks that are representing our search committee. I think we have 13 extra people in our audience tonight. And I'm going to start off by reading your names to acknowledge them publicly, and then I'm going to read you the charge. From that point, I'm going to turn you over to Mr. Mike Gilbert, and you'll be able to leave this meeting and start your training and orientation with him. So, tonight, we have joining us Jeffrey Bryson, Lori Kane, Tricia Xavier, Alyssa Camery, Richard Kane, Maureen Dolan, we have Christine McMinniman, we have M.J. Burns, we have Paul Regirio, Michael Newhouse, Jeff Hall, Robert Peterson, Jr., and Jonathan Eaton. "We, the Wilmington School Committee, hereby charge the Wilmington Superintendent's Search Advisory Committee with the task of conducting interviews with selected candidates and, based upon the Wilmington School Committee's approved criteria, recommending to the Wilmington School Committee no less than three and no more than five individuals to be finalists for the job of Superintendent of Schools for the Wilmington Public Schools." All right. And now, I can turn it over to Mr. Gilbert. And he will take you for your training and orientation. And just one other quick update for the Superintendent's Search. I've provided you all with an updated timeline with the appropriate dates. The good news is, we are still on schedule following our timeline, even with the slight adjustment for the interviews. Okay? So, I just share that, so we have the information.
Would you have an extra one of these for Linda?
We need them for the minutes.
Absolutely. Yep.
Do you also have extra the charge?
Yes.
Mine's a little...
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that brings us up to speed.
It was looking good out there for a few minutes, wasn't it? We were going to have company, so we're glad to have some company here still. Okay. Approval of items by consensus. Superintendent Benton.
You'll have seven items on the consent agenda. The approval of the minutes of February 12th regular session, the approval of the minutes for February 6th special meeting, acceptance of children's books from Kids Terrain valuing We were approached by a local author who had extra books that she wanted to donate to our kindergarten students, and I attached "They Help Your Child Discover Their Magic." It's called "The Magic in Me," sorry, Aunt Rose's House, and "Last Night I Left Earth for a While." So, all of the kindergarten students will be getting a book from Rena Hannaford, who is the CEO of Kids Terrain.
That's wonderful.
And then warrants G409, R212, R213, L33, L34, L35. Payroll warrants 212 and 226, warrants CBO6 and O7, and warrants sped 16 and 17.
And so, and there are no food warrants, but there are payroll warrants. All right. So, actually, we can approve all of these except number five payroll warrants, from which we'll... So, we'll do all the warrants except number five, and then number five separately. So, entertain a motion to do that. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve warrants G409, R212, 213, L33, 34, 35, warrants CBO6, CBO7, and sped 16 and sped 17.
And also, I'm sorry, the minutes as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the minutes.
Yeah, okay. Do we have a second? Second? Oh, my God.
Mrs. Carroll.
Mrs. Carroll, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. And then payroll warrants, number... Payroll warrants on number five here. Mrs. Bonish.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll warrants for 212 and 226.
And do we have a second? Mr. Mullis, thank you. All those in favor? One, two, three. Four in favor, two abstain. Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Okay, thank you. Our next item is a student representative.
And we have Jocelyn Ferreira.
Jocelyn.
Jocelyn. Oh, I'm sorry, Jocelyn.
Hello, it's nice to see you. Thank you for coming. If you talk a little bit closer into the microphone, because you're soft voiced. Thank you.
Here at Wilmington High School, the hockey team lost to Reading at the Division One North Tournament, ending on an amazing season. The talent show was last Friday night. There were 12 acts, and they were arranged from dancing to rapping. The DECA State Competitions also took place last weekend, with a number of students earning top awards and honors. We have four students that are attending the national competition in Atlanta, Georgia. The Prom Fashion Expo will be held tomorrow evening at 6:00 P.M. The Lampadas Drama Guild performed their one act at the competition last week in Attleboro, with several students bringing back awards. And finally, the Spring Fling will be held on Friday, March 28th.
Great. Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you a senior as well?
No, I'm a sophomore.
Oh, a sophomore. Oh, that's wonderful. Getting you ready for next year, maybe?
Yeah.
That would be great. So, nice to meet you, and thank you for coming. You don't have to stay, because we know that you want to get home to do your homework.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming. Thanks, Aunt Jocelyn. Okay. Our... We're done. We head down to number five on our list, the Superintendent's Report.
I have four items on the agenda. I have three listed, but I'm going to add a fourth one, the Personnel Report. In a minute, we're going to have Elementary Science Curriculum Presentation. And I've enclosed the Chapter 222 of the Acts of 2012, just to start thinking about... We'll be doing a presentation on that later this year. But my fourth announcement is an announcement, and I'm thrilled I have the press here. "I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Ms. Linda Peters as the next Principal of Wilmington High School. Ms. Peters is a dynamic and dedicated administrator whose passion for education is readily apparent. Her many years in the Wilmington Public Schools makes her uniquely qualified for the position, and will serve her well as she leads the staff and students into a new 21st Century school. Ms. Peters is an individual who is strong of character with an outstanding work ethic. As Wilmington High School's interim principal, she has proved herself to be an exceptional leader who is committed to the success of all students. Her leadership style has been collaborative, as she has engaged students, parents, teachers, support personnel, and others for the purpose of promoting student well-being and growth. She has the highest integrity, compassion for the most vulnerable, and ability to empathize. I am excited to be able to have Linda assume the permanent duties of the principalship, and I look forward to her leadership. I think that she will serve you well." And why I ask to do this now is I, just at the same time, sent a memo to the staff, so everybody's hearing it at once. So, Linda has accepted, and we'll begin negotiations on her contract.
Excellent. Does anyone have any comments? I'd just like to let the public know, just for the knowledge, that the School Committee does not hire and fire anyone except for the superintendent and, although there are five of the head nurse, unusual people, some...
Business manager.
Business manager.
Sped director.
And the sped director. And it is the Superintendent of Schools who chooses all of the principals. And I can't think of a better choice than Ms. Peters. Those of us whose children have had her as a... The first reaction was, oh, no, what'll we do without her in the classroom? Because she's such an outstanding educator. And so, we're so glad to have her, and she certainly has all of our support, I'm sure. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
It was a very, very nice announcement.
So, now, I'd like to invite Mr. Paul Monaco, the STEM coordinator, who's going to do a short presentation this evening on Elementary Science Curriculum and where we are at with...
Good to have you.
Thank you.
Are you in the way?
Nope, you're good. So, thank you for having me. I will be very brief, as brief as I can be. If you have any questions afterwards, feel free to ask. I'd like to just give everyone an overview of the Elementary Science Curriculum and how we're looking to bring full-option science system, or FOSS kits, into the elementary curriculum. So, let me just... Okay. So, first off, what is a FOSS kit? It's a whole package that's made up of curriculum materials that tie very closely in with a whole bunch of physical, consumable materials. So, by consumable materials, I mean things like a simple plastic balance that's easy for young kids to use, a graduated cylinder, or a vial, something like a syringe that would measure 50 milliliters of water very easily that the kids can pull, and then there's a little notch so that they don't have trouble measuring. In other words, it's physical, consumable equipment that's specifically designed to be easy to use for young kids, and that ties very closely with the curriculum materials. There are three major parts to the curriculum materials. You've got your teacher resources, that's exactly what it sounds like. It's, you know, master copies of assessments or anything that the kids, you know, any charts that they should have in their science notebooks. You've got the investigation guide. That's, I think of it as a cookbook. It's sort of like step-by-step. It's got everything from A to Z that a teacher would want, and it makes it easy for the teachers to implement the lessons. And then, you've got the resources book for the students. That's really my favorite part of the program. The resources book is nonfiction stories that the students read along with the teacher and their classmates that reinforces the science topics that they're learning. So, the instructional model of the FOSS kits is... It's very straightforward, but it's very effective. Kids begin by doing a hands-on investigation. So, that's something like, you know, in mixtures and solutions, that would be the kids going and getting the wooden beads and the plastic beads, and mixing them, putting them in separate cups, and then measuring out 50 milliliters of water, and taking the mass before, and then the mass after they mix them, and taking data in their chart, that type of thing. And then, the second phase of the instructional design is they talk about it. They talk to the teacher, they talk to each other, and they sort of come to a whole group consensus. And as they do this, the whole purpose is to continually answer a focus question. So, in this example, the focus question is, what happens when you mix solids? And so, they answer it, they do the investigation, they reflect, they refine their answer, and then what they do is they read the nonfiction stories. And so, that's really the point, and I'll skip ahead to that a little bit. If you take a look there, that's just two pictures I took of the nonfiction stories. So, an example would be, if the students are at the point where they're sort of on the cusp of understanding what a solution is, they would then read the nonfiction story on extracts. And it turns out that extracts are something that are a solution, and the kids have seen this before in their own life, coffee, tea, juice, perfumes, oils, things like that. And then, the reading progresses into showing them up close what a solution would look like under a microscope. So, it's really good stuff. And this is really the... When they go into the nonfiction part, that's really where things solidify, and it's nice to see the kids get excited. So, I've got a couple pictures here. I'll go through them quickly. Based on the success of this model, we're recommending that we adopt enough kits to be shared for the... All the students to have access to these in kindergarten, grade three, and grade five for next year. I've got a couple of pictures here that just show the different stages. This is one of our teachers just prepping the students for an investigation, and here's the focus question for that day. And everything you see on the board, the students have in front of them in their science notebooks. And here, the teacher is getting them ready to go, and they're off. So, up in the top right, you see some of the kids getting some gravel and some sand, and they're getting ready to measure things. And then, on the bottom left, you can see some of the other students working in groups. They're getting the equipment that they'll use. In this case, it's a balance, so that they can take the mass of the mixtures before and after. And here, they are actually doing the work. And, you know, the students are taking these measurements and talking about what they're sort of discovering as they go, and they're taking notes. They're recording their data as they go. And as they do this, they're going to work together, and they're going to try to figure out, not only what's happening as they mix things, but they're also going to try and figure out what tools they can use that they've been provided to help them separate, in this example, mixtures. So, this, you know, it might seem trivial to us as adults, but this was actually a pretty big moment. The girl in this picture, she's discovering right now that if she uses the magnet, it's much easier to get the plastic clips separate from the metal clips rather than using your hand. Here, we've got some other students who are realizing the usefulness of the screen that they were provided as a tool. And so, they're pulling the... They're getting the water out of the mixture with the wooden beads and the plastic beads, so that they can then go separate them by hand. And then, they come together. This is sort of the second phase, where they come together as a group, and they talk about what they're learning. And then, in the bottom there, you can see the kids are making refinements to their focus question as they go. So, that's sort of the process in a nutshell. And I just thought... I won't go through all these, but I just thought I would quickly highlight that the eight practices of science and engineering, which are a big part of the new science standards, the kids here using this program are really doing this stuff, you know, like asking questions and defining problems, developing and using models, planning and carrying out investigations, analyzing and interpreting their data. They're really doing that, and they're producing work that's really exciting to see, and it's high-quality stuff. So, I'll be quick with this. I did want to take just three minutes and try to give people an example of this type of learning, where you get your hands dirty, reflect, refine, go back at it again, and sort of proceed gradually. I don't know if any of you have heard of the Marshmallow Challenge, but this is a pretty good and kind of funny example that's sort of analogous to the way that the kids are learning in the program. So, I'll cut this off at three minutes. And I hope it's not too loud. I turned the volume up beforehand.
Several years ago, here at TED, Peter Skilman introduced a design challenge called the Marshmallow Challenge. And the idea is pretty simple. Teams of four have to build the tallest freestanding structure out of 20 sticks of spaghetti, one yard of tape, one yard of string, and a marshmallow. The marshmallow has to be on top. And though it seems really simple, it's actually pretty hard, because it forces people to collaborate very quickly. And so, I thought this was an interesting idea, and I incorporated it into a design workshop, and it was a huge success. And since then, I've conducted about 70 design workshops across the world with students and designers and architects, even the CTOs of the Fortune 50. And there's something about this exercise that reveals very deep lessons about the nature of collaboration, and I'd like to share some of them with you. So, normally, most people begin by orienting themselves to the task. They talk about it, they figure out what it's going to look like, they jockey for power, then they spend some time planning, organizing, they sketching, they lay out spaghetti. They spend the majority of their time assembling the sticks into ever-growing structures. And then, finally, just as they're running out of time, someone takes out the marshmallow, and then they gingerly put it on top, and they stand back, and ta-da! They admire their work. But what really happens most of the time is that the ta-da turns into an uh-oh, because the weight of the marshmallow causes the entire structure to buckle and to collapse. So, there are a number of people who have a lot more uh-oh moments than others. And among the worst are recent graduates of business school. They lie, they cheat, they get distracted, and they produce really lame structures. And of course, there's teams that have a lot more ta-da structures. And among the best are recent graduates of kindergarten. And it's pretty amazing, as Peter tells us, not only do they produce the tallest structures, but they're the most interesting structures of them all. So, the question you want to ask is, how come? Why? What is it about them? And Peter likes to say that none of the kids spend any time trying to be CEO of Spaghetti Inc., right? They don't spend time jockeying for power. But there's another reason as well. And the reason is that business students are trained to find this single right plan, right? And then, they execute on it. And then, what happens is, when they put the marshmallow on top, they run out of time, and what happens? It's a crisis. Sound familiar, right? Okay. What kindergartners do differently is that they start with the marshmallow, and they build prototypes, successive prototypes, always keeping the marshmallow on top, so they have multiple...
So, that sort of gives you just a funny example that we can relate to as adults. And, you know, there are a lot of benefits to the program. Other things that I should probably mention, it's very well-aligned with the Common Core state standards. The kids are, you know, they're making arguments based on evidence all the time. There's lots of informational writing. They're writing arguments, they're referring to their evidence. The next-generation science standards align with the program very well, and because of that, this aligns nicely with the new draft that we're getting of the Massachusetts Science Standards. It's very hands-on, the kids love it, and everything's online. So, I'm very happy with it, and I think that it's a nice thing for the kids. So, thank you. If there's any questions that you'd like me to try and answer, I'm more than happy to do that.
And the hope is that the following year, we would bring it into second and fourth grade. So, we have Bob... So, it goes through there.
Yeah, I wanted to ask... Just a quick refresher. We've been looking at elementary science programs for about four years now, and we delayed a decision on it because we knew that there were new standards coming out, and wanted to make sure that we weren't spending money on something that then was going to need to be changed. So, Paul did a terrific job of researching, bringing in some programs, recruiting teachers to try it out. That was Bob Mariello you saw in the pictures, their greater trustee, who's been really terrific with taking on a lot of the pilots of science over the past few years. But I think it's a great decision, recommendation, and I think it will serve our students well for many years to come. And having taught elementary science for 12 years, I have to say that, to me, the only way to do it is hands-on, and this program is totally hands-on. So, I'm excited about it.
I love that. I'd just like to say, thinking back, and it's been like 30 years, when my children were going through the school system, science was number... If there were four topic areas, content areas, it was number four, because most of the teachers didn't want to teach it. They didn't like it at all, and they were nervous about science, and they never had science. And so, I'm hoping something like this, it looks... Actually, I had seen something on that, I think on PBS. It was fascinating. I was just flipping through, and then you'd just stop, and it was really excellent. But I'm hoping that when the teachers get going on to the hands-on projects and see those little kids responding, and the glee, and the... But they're really learning something. I think that's terrific. And I just wanted to ask you, I know things are coming up again about Common Core, and we just seem to be so far beyond that in our school system. I noticed that the homework for the second grade is the little sheets at the top always they all say Common Core, Common Core related, Common Core related. And they are a little bit different from the frameworks related, the way to... The way that my fifth-grade grandson was doing math, the way that my third... Second-grade granddaughter is doing it. But if you even try to help her, she's like, I know that, Nana. So, she... It's complicated to me, but she just flies right through it. And I'm thinking, why are people making such a fuss over Common Core? And probably, you don't know, but is there a difference in your science that it seems to me this is a very good way to be doing things?
Yeah. So, the Common Core in regards to science really focuses in on writing informational and argumentative text based on evidence.
Oh, I love that.
And that's really what they're doing a lot of the time.
And that's what people are having problems implementing that in their schools? That's why people don't want to have it?
I don't know that people don't want to have it, I think.
Oh, it's in... It's been a lot on our blog.
Yeah?
Yeah, on the School Committee blog. It's one of the issues.
Well, I think there's a bigger issue, and a piece of it I do agree with, because I'm looking at Kathy Mackless sitting in the audience, but I have to say, I am saddened that some of the classics that I read in school...
Yes.
The fiction is not part of the Common Core anymore, and I think that we are cheating our students by not giving them the love of J.D. Salinger, of Charles Dickens. I mean, there are tons of them that, you know, it's not part of the curriculum anymore, and that, to me, is a tragedy. But that being said, I do believe that we do need to teach our students how to read nonfiction. And this science program not only has hands-on, but it also has science content. And Dr. Mackless works... Was working with Paul at all levels in trying to help teachers with nonfiction content area topics so far for students to be... And it is, that is a different skill. But I just... I guess it's because I'm married to an English teacher, I don't know. I've loved English literature forever, and I think it's sad that that's not part of it. So, I think that's one of the big complaints.
But it doesn't mean they can't sneak it in there somehow.
No, I do it, and they will.
And I think eventually, they will, yes.
And I think that there's a little bit of pushback out there. I know in New York, there's a big bit of pushback. And I think Joanne's words are, you know, I think we need to teach them new skills aligned with standards, but to not throw... Certainly not throw away Dickens, and not throw away some of the great works, because we want to keep them excited about learning.
Absolutely.
And I think trying to have science blend, especially for those of us that may not have loved science growing up, we're getting the science teachers to understand that the text can serve for lots of good writing experiences. So, we're in close collaboration, and I think the FOSS materials are a great start to kind of move up the ladder with that kind of writing.
Well, I have to congratulate you all for being in the forefront here. Dr. Quick?
I think this sounds... I mean, I have both my children in Destination Imagination, so we do all these challenge great, amazing things that I love, and so, I'm writing down Marshmallow Challenge for next week. But just out of... This is just a complete curiosity question. During... When they're doing these experiments, are we teaching them to hypothesize and kind of, you know, answer yes or no to my own question? Or that is part of the process? Great. Wonderful, thank you.
That's excellent. Any other... Let's go.
How about the test scores? Do you find that it's higher because they're hands-on and they're learning more?
Well, they actually... So, the program, I should have mentioned this, you can give pre-tests and post-tests. I should have, like, brought them with me, but... They have pre-test and post-test that you can do online before you start, you know, different parts of the kit. And it's very specific, and it goes through, and it shows, you know, what the kids are learning that they didn't know before. And then, on questions where the students give a wrong answer, it actually identifies what misunderstanding probably led to that.
Okay.
So, yeah. Bob Mariello was very good at that, and I'm hoping that as we train new people to use the kits, hopefully, he can be a part of that and sort of play up the benefits of that pre and post-online portion of it, because it was pretty powerful.
Oh, great. Excellent.
Thank you very much. That was a very nice presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, and thank you, Joanne, for all your help with this. It's been great.
Okay, our next item? Oh, okay. The calendars.
No, first we're going to do... Lody Weisberg and Rena Reader were two teachers in the Wilmington Public Schools who, in their... Left proceeds from their estate to the Wilmington Public Schools for the purpose of scholarships. Over three years, we have received $263,720, which is a... Over three years, we have received $263,720, which is incredible. Most recently, we received correspondence that an annuity in an amount of $17,000 had been identified. And in order for us to access it, I recommend that you vote the following, that the following motion be voted on to execute the New York Life Annuities Individual Claim Form Contract Number 756112211, and act in pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 3C, to accept the proceeds from deposit in the Lodi Weisberg and Lena Leiter Student Scholarship Fund.
Okay, who would like to make a motion? Anyone like to make one? Mrs. Bonish?
Can I read the whole thing again?
She's just saying some word.
Okay, some word. Do we have a second? Mrs. Broussard. All of us in favor? Unanimous.
We are extremely grateful to these two women who have really given a wonderful gift to many, many students for years to come.
Sure have, that's fantastic, yes.
Oh, my God.
Do you think they still have relatives in our town?
No, they don't. We've done research, there's no, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Yeah.
That's very nice, thank you. Okay, proposed calendar for 2014-2015 school year.
I'm not asking you to vote on this this evening, I'm just putting it out for you to think about, and I presented it to the teachers' union. As you know, we have a big move happening in February of next year, and in order to do that, the high school teachers are gonna need some time. So, I'm proposing that we move the Professional Development Day to the Friday before vacation to allow, K-8 will have professional development, and the high school teachers would do, be packing. And then, we would bring the teachers back on February 23rd without students, and to unpack and get familiar with the high school, and the students would arrive on the 24th, which would mean that for the high school students, we would add one day on at the end of the calendar in order to, to fill that commitment. To me, this makes the most sense as far as transitions, and I, it actually gives parents, if we do it now, anybody that wants to travel with the Friday off, they actually might get some, a little bit of discount on flights, and it'd be easier to go on February vacation. I know that usually, that weekend, the-
The way up, yeah.
So, I will bring this back at the next meeting, but I just wanted to know if, if that's something that you would support.
Is that Friday, the 13th, right here? The Friday?
That's a Friday, yes. Yes. Maybe that's another reason.
Would we say that we, consensus is that we would support this?
Yes.
Yes, I think so, absolutely.
And then, we traditionally always approve a generic calendar for the following year to help people plan vacations. And this is for 2015-16, and it really just identifies the status school, which would probably is one, is the latest. It would be the 31st, 'cause that year, Labor Day is on the 1st, and identifies the week vacations. Again, I will bring this back at the next meeting for a vote. But people are already asking, they're planning their, wish I could be that far ahead, 2015-16 vacations.
It's hard to believe. Okay, public comment? No public comment. Other reports? Did we have, you'll be happy to know that we did send in a team.
Yay, just, yeah, just a reminder, the spelling bee, not this Friday, the following Friday. Be there, and, and if anybody is not a part of a team, you're always welcome to come and enjoy. There will be some raffles, including some Bruins tickets to give away, and it's gonna be fun, as always.
Thank you. Did we have just a policy update?
Yeah, we did have a meeting. We had a policy meeting, and we talked about two policies. The electronic device policy, specifically the pickup, the end, the part of it where if kids are, if they don't follow the rules, the fact that parents have to come and pick it up. And we talked about changing that, so nothing is definite yet, but something else is, something different is gonna be written up about it, and then brought forth.
Will we bring the changes to the next meeting?
Yeah. Okay. And then, the other one we talked about was the, we specifically talked about the eighth grade field trip, and the rules regarding kids who have issues where they shouldn't be going on the field trip, or, you know, they, they have an appeal process. So, we just talked about the rules regarding that as well. So, then that's something else that will, will be rewritten, and we'll talk about.
Okay, thank you. Any, do we have any other? I do know Mrs. Broussard has been working day and night on the superintendent's search, and we really appreciate her time. And I think that's, that was it, okay. Correspondence.
Can we talk about this?
What do we do?
Oh, the chapter. Sure, I, I put that in your packet. It's a new discipline law that's gonna, that I, we're going to effect law first, that we're just learning about.
Okay.
And later on in the year, we, we had, last Friday, Indy Waugh gave us a two-hour workshop on it. This is, is gonna really affect how we do business in schools and also our budget, because the law now says that we cannot expel students anymore. We have to provide them with an education, and suspension as well. And so, it is, puts quite an onus on the schools, and I don't feel that students who are expelled for, for a felony should be coming back in the building, so we're gonna have to come up with some alternative places to educate these students. So, I will be coming back later on this spring with a presentation, but I want you to get the background of it. The other piece has to do with attendance, again. They've taken the onus off the parents and put it on the schools, and contacting parents around if their child's not in school, and having to give parents three possible dates to meet to discuss it. I just-
All this still help?
Mm-hmm. It's just, it's another state mandate that I don't believe is gonna help us at all, and gonna cost you.
It's been all along by state mandates. Incredible. And MJ is really concerned about this Chapter 222 issue, and she, I hope, did you all get the email with the article she had suggested we read, too? So, that's good. All right, yeah. Okay, do we have any other future meeting dates? Oh, we're asking that April 9th would still be, April 9th will still have our regular meeting. We're going to have to have a little flexibility in April, April to May.
Yeah, so that won't do.
And April 23rd is a definite no. Oh, okay.
I don't know if April 17th is that-
I think we have to wait-
Around there.
Yeah, there's still some fluidity in some of these states, so stay tuned.
Okay.
I'll try to keep everybody as up to date as possible.
For WCTV, we definitely will not be meeting on the 23rd, because that's, that's, is that school vacation?
School vacation.
Yes. But we may be meeting before that, on the 17th.
That's Thursday.
All right, but it may be a Thursday. So, we'll, yeah. Mrs. Broussard's gonna be in contact with you to talk it over.
If you let us know, we can contact them.
Okay, that's it. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Dr. Quick?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, this is Carol. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everybody.